Good evening and welcome to the April 2nd remote livestream of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Leece?
Present.
Councilwoman Overby?
Here.
Councilman Bragman?
Here.
Supervisor Mansfield.
Present, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic
which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, we're in a difficult and trying time. The pandemic is impacting every aspect of our lives and every corner of our planet. Everyone is being called upon to make sacrifices. For many, their sacrifice will mean a loss of income. For all, it will necessarily be greater physical isolation from others, friends, and loved ones. We must all take responsibility for ourselves and take care of one another. We have to reduce the impact that the spread of this disease has on our friends, family, and greater community by heeding the advice of our scientists and healthcare professionals. Stay home. I'll say it again, stay home. Only go out for food and medicine at this time or to seek medical care. If you do go out, make sure that you stay a safe distance away from others, at least six feet. Follow proper hygiene such as frequent hand washing and disinfecting commonly used surfaces. Following all this advice now and until further notice will help slow the spread of COVID-19. It will help protect our health and that of others and the strength and capacity of our healthcare system to serve those who are sick and require medical attention. Our first responders and especially healthcare workers are putting themselves at risk to protect and save us. Let's not put them at risk unnecessarily. We're all in this together, we all have a role to play, and we can do this. At this point, I'd like to open our phone lines up for callers to ask questions or voice their concerns. We, uh, we are gonna try and see if we can get this to work. The teleconferencing, uh, technology is being tried for the first time in this way. So please be patient and bear with us if we, uh, if we run into difficulties and we may have to cut it short. Again, I ask each caller to just limit your comments, uh, to be as brief as possible. We have a lot of important business to also get on with tonight. So, uh, Jason, if you can cue in the first caller.
Hello?
Hello, good evening. If you could state your name, please?
Dr. Louis Gross.
Hi Louis, how are you? Dr. Louis Gross is on the line.
Yes, I'm calling from Montauk. Uh, my question to Peter, I sent you an email and I spoke with Richard Fleming about considering setting up a triage center, uh, planning for one in case it's needed, possibly at uh, Third House, which has a historical precedent. Has anything been done to set up mobile units and assist Southampton Hospital?
Yeah, so the, um, there are, there are a number of developments within the hospital system, both locally and statewide. The low, all hospitals have to increase their capacity by a minimum of 50% and many are reaching for 100% goal. Uh, this will increase the number of ICU beds. Uh, they're also increasing the number of ventilators throughout the system. They're expanding, uh, at Southampton, they've taken over Parish Hall and have additional space there. And, uh, you know, basically the, the plan is to have all expansions adjacent to the existing or close by the existing hospital system. Uh, the other development that's occurred is that the state is now, um, coordinating all hospital systems within the state and has taken over that responsibility and authority, uh, so that all hospital resources can be put to bear where they're most needed. Um, and again, we are standing by, uh, ready and willing to help the hospital. Uh, if they do have any requests for additional housing of patients within the township. At this time, they've indicated that that's not likely to be a request uh, as they, they need to have it closer to the existing staff and infrastructure. But thank you for calling in Louis.
Peter, can you just, my audio was bad, where was he recommending a triage?
At Third, at Third House in Montauk. You know, the historic precedent there obviously is that, uh, Camp Wyckoff, as it was called during Teddy Roosevelt's day, had, uh, soldiers who were quarantined and recovering from, um, I believe, yellow fever at the time. Jason, could you cue the next caller, please?
Caller's being queued.
Hello, good af, good evening. Could you please state your name for the record?
I'm not sure if that was me, Peter, it's Teresa Berger.
Hi Teresa, how are you?
I'm okay. Uh, just wanna say I think the town is doing a very nice job. I am concerned though that there is still some minor construction work going on and I was wondering if there's any further thought with the town to stop construction on housing completely during the duration of this. In terms of workers that are on high
So, um, as, as you may know, and, uh, many may know that the governor uh, executive order, uh, required that all non-essential business, uh, stop immediately. And then they listed a number of different businesses considered essential. The guidance on what are considered essential and non-essential businesses has been a moving target since the first order came out. And there have been a number of adjustments back and forth. Construction, um, was, uh, not very long ago considered essential in all construction. Uh, that has since been revised. Uh, essential construction is now any construction that relates to infrastructure or public safety or construction, um, jobs that are currently going on can continue to a point at which they're safe to discontinue. Uh, in other words, if they're in unsafe conditions on that site, um, then they can make the site safe before ceasing work. However, there is an exemption if you are working, if you have a sole worker on a job site, that is currently permitted. Uh, again, the guidance on all essential businesses is, has been a moving target. Uh, also landscaping, uh, was originally deemed as being, um, essential. Uh, including, uh, because of Ag and Markets Horticulture, which would include the planting of ornamental plants, that has now been restricted to just how, uh, lawn maintenance, uh, you know, cleaning up properties, uh, cutting grass and, um, also the, the spraying or pest control. Um, that, those are deemed, uh, essential at this time. So again, um, you know, we, we don't have authority to override the governor's, uh, executive orders. Uh, however, we have had input on a daily basis as to how those orders are being carried out and have made suggestions and are in constant contact with governor's office. Thanks for calling Terry.
Peter, can you do us a favor when the calls come in? Can you repeat the question because the audio, I'm not getting the audio, I have a feeling that may be true for others.
Okay, I've, I've turned up my volume a lot, so when I hear the rest of you speak, I, it's really loud too.
Aye.
So, um, Jason, if you could please call, uh, cue the next caller.
Hi.
Hello?
Hello, this is Francesca. Can you hear me?
Hi Francesca, how are you?
How are you? I'm good, sheltering in place, like everyone. Um, I wanted to ask, you know, we've been seeing reports about the Southampton and Riverhead programs that the town is putting together to help bring, um, items, not just groceries, but medicines and hospital hardware items to seniors. I mean, those of us who are, you know, um, under Matilda's law and strictly forbidden to go out without masks or, you know, um, I just wondered if there was any plans, and I hope there will be, to set up something similar in East Hampton.
So our, our, uh, Human Services Department, the question was, I don't know if the other board members heard it. The question was, uh, what are we doing in terms of providing services to, to people? Um, for instance, meals or, or, uh, the ability to deliver prescriptions and that sort of thing, essential goods, uh, to people within the town. Um, the, the caller mentioned that Riverhead and Southampton are doing that. Um, currently, our Human Services Department, um, for those in, in need and especially seniors, um, has been helping to arrange that, that type of, uh, that type of thing. And I don't know, Kathy, you wanna add anything additionally to that?
Sure, so, um, currently, uh, our Human Services Department continues to provide assistance to seniors and other community members in need. They are doing weekly wellness calls. Since the center closed on March 10th, they've been calling seniors who use town programs as well as those community members who are on the town's special needs list. For example, they're on oxygen or wheelchair bound or on dialysis and the town's emergency services list. Currently, we're doing these wellness checks, uh, every week to see if folks are in need of assistance and we have 538 seniors that are receiving these calls. Uh, what we've been doing, there's a number of critical services for seniors, including prepared meals. We've, uh, we deliver five frozen meals along with oatmeal, fresh fruit, and tea bags. They can either be delivered or folks can come and pick them up curbside. Uh, through the end of March, we've distributed over 1,135 meals and currently 166 seniors are receiving meals on a weekly basis. We're also doing grocery shopping for essentials and picking up and delivering needed prescriptions. So those services are in place. You just need to call the Human Services Department Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at 631-329-6939.
Great Kathy, and, and, uh, and again, we are also taking, um, volunteers, they can call in, uh, or email us if they'd like to volunteer to, to perform certain services or if they have certain resources that they can bring to bear. We're, we're collecting a master spreadsheet of, of those entities, individuals, and what resources they might have to contribute to help us during this time. Um, and that's, that's on our town website as well. The town website, of course, is ehamptonny.gov. Thanks for calling in Francesca and be well.
I'd just like to mention that, that, uh, East End Cares is a group of great volunteers. You know, really a large number of volunteers who are out there ready to help out with the town and, uh, any senior that needs delivery help. They've got like a couple thousand volunteers, East End Cares.
And it's East End Cares, the number one at gmail.com.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think Jason's gonna, um, cut for a minute to try and fix the audio issue with the callers. Uh, I, I got word that callers at home are having a hard time, um, hearing uh, anything that's said by the callers. So I'm doing my best to repeat the questions, but he thinks he can fix that now. Great, thank you Jason. Could we cue the next caller, please? Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Who's calling? Hello, can you hear us?
Are you talking to me? My name is Orly Friedman, can you hear me?
Hi, hi Orly, yes I can. Good evening.
Okay, well, I
Hope you're well.
difficulties. Thank you, I hope you're well and thank you for taking my call. Um, I'm actually calling, um, I've noticed that, um, there's a lot of wire work going on all over town. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, keep, keep speaking Orly, we can hear you fine.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So I've noticed there's a lot of wire work taking place on Springs Fireplace Road. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you fine.
Um, okay. Um, uh, hi, yes.
Ask her to turn off her TV in the background.
So what's going on is, um, apparently there's 5G repeaters being installed on these 40-foot poles all over, um, Springs Fireplace Road, Three Mile Harbor Road. And while this may not be related to COVID-19, I feel like, uh, the fact that we can't, um, really discuss the environmental impact of all of this radiation. And there have been, uh, peer-reviewed studies that are actually connecting this virus to 5G. And while I'm not a scientist, I just know that there are a lot of people that are deeply affected by radiation, cell phone towers. And I'm just concerned that there's no public input on this. And when I spoke to the Highway Department about permits, I was told that the poles are owned by Verizon and that they can do whatever they want. So I am a little concerned that the public has no input in all of this and I'm, I'm just a little perplexed by the fact that this is East Hampton. Why do we need 5G? We all fought against the tower at the fire department because we didn't want all that radiation and we didn't want the unsightliness. And I'm, I feel like the timing of all of this is suspect with all the town offices closed, that we're just being railroaded by this stuff and nobody knows the health impacts. There are over 500 peer-reviewed studies about this that have been done. And I would urge the board, and I thank the board for taking the time to hear this out, but if we could, um, check, there's a website called environmentalhealthtrust.com. I think it would behoove us to maybe stop the process and look into it because this is going to affect not only human lives but the lives of our, um, you know, wildlife, possibly oyster beds, clam beds, the fishermen. We have no idea what the impact is. So I would appreciate, um, I don't know how to stop this or how to even address this. And thank you for, uh, taking my call.
Thanks for calling in Orly. I just wanna, um, let you know that this is, this is something that's recently, um, you know, begun, this project. Um, my understanding is that both, uh, Fios, which is Verizon and, um, Altice, Optimum Online, which is Altice, are, are pulling fiber optic cable all over the town. Uh, and this is to increase connectivity and some of it is 5G as I understand it. I also understand that the Congress, the United States Congress passed a bill very recently. Uh, haven't had a chance to read through the entire bill, it's rather long, but, uh, essentially the summary, uh, talks about, um, the bill requires the President of the United States to, uh, move forward and install 5G. And it has to do with security issues and concerns regarding, uh, the fact that our existing infrastructure is provided most primarily, uh, and to a large degree by China and that there are security concerns as a result of that. Um, that's stated in the, uh, preamble part of the bill. Uh, we certainly, uh, didn't have a heads up that this was going to start. We recently become aware of, just in the last couple of days. I did see the cable being pulled the last week or so, um, and when I asked construction workers what that was, they said it was fiber optic cable. Um, many of you know that the bandwidth out here is, is, uh, pretty limited. Uh, and especially now, we're experiencing even greater, um, you know, uh, bandwidth issues. Um, the platform we were gonna use for tonight's meeting uh, was not well-supported because of the, the bandwidth issues. And so we've gone to Zoom meeting instead. Uh, but this is certainly something that we're gonna continue to look into in the next couple of days as time allows. Um, certainly would be good to know exactly what that means here locally and what control we have, if any, over this. Uh, I suspect that any local authority has been, um, overridden and, uh, in this case. Uh, but we'll certainly look into that. Thank you for calling Orly. We have the next caller, please.
Hello?
Hello, could you state your name, please?
Lorraine Krieger.
Hi Lorraine, how are you?
Hello Lorraine.
It's nice to hear your voice.
I'm good, I'm good, how are you?
Doing okay, thank you.
Good. I was just wondering, you know, as Montauk is such a seasonal area, I'm very, very concerned about the seasonal businesses here. And, uh, it seems to be a lot of misinformation or information that's not really clear about what we're filing with PPP or this, uh, EID, EIDMC, um, for, um, getting grants. I know there's three, uh, there's 501(c)(3)'s and 501(3)(6)'s. I don't know what information you have. And the other question, my second question would be, how many cases are there in specifically in Montauk that you're aware of?
So, um, a couple of things there. The first is what, what kind of assistance would be available for, um, businesses? Obviously, this is having a tremendous negative impact on businesses, um, here and everywhere. Um, you know, there have been a, a number of developments, including the, the Care, the Care Act. Uh, there's the, the Paycheck Protection Plan. Uh, we are gonna put up, if it hasn't already gone up today, we put together a list of, uh, various links to, uh, sites that can aid business, uh, Small Business Guidance and Loan Resource. And, uh, so we'll put that information up on the website. I think it went up earlier today, but, uh, it'll certainly be up there by tomorrow. Uh, has a number of links to help.
Yeah, I've been on many, many conference calls, it just seems that there's a lot of unanswered questions. So I just, I think that is a wait and see.
So we, yeah, so the, the other thing that we're doing is, uh, the town board understanding that, you know, the first part of this crisis is really to get through the health, uh, concerns. Um, but at the same time, we know that recovery is gonna require a great deal of work with our businesses to make sure that everybody gets back to normal as soon as possible. Uh, so we're gonna be working together with local businesses to help them understand what programs, uh, they can, um, avail themselves of as part of this recovery. And we're also going to, you know, convene, uh, committees specifically dealing with these issues to help people get back on their feet as poss, as fast as possible once the threat of the disease has passed. So that the, uh, uh, and then the second part of your question was the numbers. Um, the most recent numbers, and I get a daily update, uh, for the county total wide is 8,946, eight, I'm sorry, 8,927 countywide can, that's total confirmed cases of COVID to date. Uh, that's 1,141 more than yesterday. There have been 2100 and, uh, 21,400 tests given within the county to date with a 41% positive rate. There are 1,054 people hospitalized currently and there have been, uh, 15 more deaths today for a total of 84. Uh, 31 of those deaths have occurred in the last 48 hours. Uh, within the town of East Hampton, we have 36 known cases, uh, as of today. Uh, by comparison, Islep has 1,884, Southampton has 151, Riverhead 108, Southhold 164. So, uh, you know, the further you move west, uh, the greater the, the number of cases increases and, and increases fairly dramatically. I, um, I expect that we will, we're just at the beginning of this upswing of cases. Countywide, we can expect this to increase dramatically over the next several weeks. And again, that's why it is so absolutely important that everybody take this seriously. Uh, there really is, um, a great deal, uh, that we can do to flatten this curve. And we've seen, uh, data that shows that in areas where this has been done early and effectively, it's had, uh, very good results. Um, my daughter lives out in California in her town of Berkeley, just outside San Francisco. They were one of the first communities to really shut down and shelter in place, uh, and across California. Uh, immediately after that, um, they're seeing their numbers flatten out somewhat compared to areas where, um, you know, there hasn't been this kind of, uh, shelter in place being practiced. So again, that's
What about Montauk?
Well, Montauk has cases just like everywhere else. Uh, I don't have the exact number of case. I don't have the exact number of cases in Montauk. Uh, the last I looked, it was, uh, oh, let me see if I can find it, I'll just bear with me a minute. I think the important thing to keep in mind, the important thing to keep in mind, Lorraine, is that this is, this is widespread all over Long Island.
Of course, of course, I understand that.
And, and, uh, you know, I, I think, um, the best, again, we can do is to just limit contact with others at this time to slow that spread. Now, we had, uh, our first confirmed case within East Hampton on March, um, March 12th. I declared a state of emergency the, the following day for East Hampton.
I mean, I heard the last
Excuse, hold on, just, just, just a minute, Lorraine, let me just finish, okay? The, the, the next, um, the next day I declared a state of emergency, we closed the senior center and I also closed the, the rec center, the YMCA, because that was obviously a place where the disease might spread quickly. And, you know, I think it's, um, it's important to understand that the very first case that we had documented within the town on the 12th was one of community spread. It was not a case where the person had made contact with a known, um, person, a person that was known to have the disease and they had not traveled abroad to, or anywhere, uh, you know, where there had been a hotspot. So, you know, our very first case was confirmed as a community spread. Uh, most of the immediate cases after that was the same story. Um, you know, at the same time, uh, New York City was starting to, to blow up and, you know, within a week or so, then we started, uh, started seeing an influx. So the disease was already here in our community, uh, as it is pretty much all over the country. And I think, you know, it's just a matter of how long it's been there and how well people abide by the guidance as to how quickly it will continue to spread. So, um, I thank you for calling in, Lorraine, and be well.
Well, you, you guys are doing a great job, the town board. You're keeping us informed. I just would like to make sure that everyone understands that you can always go to the East Hampton Town, uh, website and get the up-to-date information.
Right, thank you for that, Lorraine, we are posting those numbers on a, on a daily basis and please be well.
We are.
It's nice to hear from you.
We are. Yeah, I appreciate, thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine, take care. Jason, could we cue the next caller, please?
You're up.
Hello? Hello?
Moving on to next caller.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, who am I speaking with? Hello, who's calling?
It's Nancy Lockren.
Hi Nancy, how are you? Nice to hear you.
Hi, I'm good, I'm good.
Hope you're well.
Um, yes, uh, I am doing my part to stay inside. Um, glad to see you're okay. Um, my question or my comment is, um, it's kind of unbelievable that the, uh, DEC railroaded that permit and for the sandmine during this pandemic while knowing the town offices were closed. Um, we're just finding that kind of outrageous, um, that that happens. It seems such a sneaky thing to do, um, at such a critical time in our town and country.
Well, first of all, uh, we just learned of this, we just learned of this and We just learned of this and we were not notified directly by the DEC. But the town offices are not closed, they're only closed to the public. But, you know, I was very surprised to learn that the permit had been issued and that we found out about it in that way, rather than getting notification or further response from the DEC to, to what have been very strong objections by the town. So, we'll, we'll continue to follow up on that issue. And, you know, we're, we'll be talking about it later. But I appreciate you calling in about it, and we are aware of it. Be safe, stay home as much as you can, and be well, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Give, give my best to Jim, too. All right, take care.
Well, thanks, Peter. Okay, bye.
Jason, could you cue the next caller?
No other callers.
No other callers. Okay, so, hi, David. So, you know, at this point, I just want to say that, you know, we, we have been doing this for, it seems like,
A year?
A month. Every, every day is a week, every week is a, is a month, every month seems like a year. We've been in constant contact with both the governor's office, Assemblyman Steele, Bridget Fleming, county legislator, our county executive. I've had calls with him every single day, sometimes multiple times in a day, as well as his staff and other supervisors and mayors. And I just want to convey my gratitude to all the elected officials who have all been working very cooperatively together, assisting each other, giving advice, letting us know what's happening in other municipalities, and, and all coming together to address this to the best of our ability. No one pretty much living has ever had to deal with a global pandemic before. But it's really encouraging to see so many people coming together at this time. And again, just for all of, all those people who are really putting themselves at risk to protect us, our healthcare workers especially at this time, our first responders, thank you, thank you, thank you. Jesse, Mayor Jesse Warren in Southampton Village has suggested that we all take a moment at 7:00 PM tomorrow night to go out and applaud all those who are there to help us as has been done in New York and other cities throughout the world to really acknowledge and thank them for their service in this dire time. So, please keep that in mind. Go outside, honk the horn in your car, or, you know, clap loudly, yell out, "Thank you" at 7:00 PM tomorrow night. So, there's, there's a lot that we can talk about in terms of the town's efforts. We, we certainly have been doing a great deal, and there are so many moving parts. It's at a time like this that we find out just how interdependent and interconnected we all are. And so, the impacts of pulling, you know, any tooth out of that cog because of this crisis means that those wheels have to figure out how to turn without those cogs. So, we've been filling in where necessary to make sure that that happens. We're continuing to operate a town government, although at a very reduced staffing levels. We do have certain departments which are considered critical and essential employees. At this time, I also want to thank all of our town employees who are so dedicated and who are working to make sure that the wheels of government continue to turn and to serve the town people as best as possible during this time. Do board members have any, anything they want to add in terms of what's going on or their efforts, information to bring to the public at this time? Again, the best, best way to get up-to-date information from the town is by visiting our website, which is ehamptonny.gov. And we're constantly putting updates there. If you pull up the website and you want to get a coronavirus update and find out what's going on relative to that, there's a banner across the top of the website that says coronavirus, and there's a little, in red, I believe, update. Click on the word "update," and it'll take you to the page with all the various links and other pages and press releases, etc.
Yeah, Peter, if you don't mind, I'll talk about, a little bit about our Parks and Recreation Department right now. Being a liaison to Parks and Recreation, I want to let everyone know that all of the town facilities, as far as the skate park in Montauk, also the Amagansett Youth Park are going to be closed until further notice. Also, all of the volleyball nets and the basketball nets in the township have actually been removed or cordoned off. If you're going to go into any of the town parklands, please use social distancing guidelines. This is how we're going to flatten the curve also. Also, there is, if you're going to go to the beaches, please do not congregate. This is a health emergency that we all have to do this together if we want to have a good summer in the next couple of months. So, please, we do not want to have to shut down anything more that we're doing. So, please just listen to what the health emergency is and also to what the supervisor's office is saying right now. I do want to let you know also about sanitation. Sanitation is open. It is one of the essential aspects the town has deemed right now. It is also a, a point where people can come together. Please also use social distancing at sanitation right now. Also, the dump permits have been extended until further notice then, too. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, David. There are a couple other announcements I'd like to make. There is free daycare available for essential workers, healthcare workers, first responders, police, grocery, delivery, sanitation, and more, being offered by the Eleanor Whitmore Early Childhood Development Center. And you can contact them. They're taking children ages eighteen months to twelve years with a preference, again, for the first responders and healthcare workers. That's Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM. And you can contact them at ewecc.org. And again, we'll have that posted on the town website. If, if you didn't have an opportunity to write that down, then that's free, no charge. The food pantries within the town and various other groceries and restaurants, farm stands have been contributing baskets of food to those who are in need. We're in a town where many people work paycheck to paycheck. Many who never thought they'd be without a paycheck are suddenly finding they, they are without one. The number of clients, the food pantries are handling has doubled just in the last week or so. Thankfully, the contributions of funds to those different pantries has been coming in. We urge that if you can give something to the food pantries, to please do so. That will help us all get through this together. Also, just some other general information. As I said, this affects every aspect of our life. The governor has postponed primaries, the presidential primary and other elections within the state until June 23rd. Federal taxes, the filed date is now July 15th instead of April 15th. In some cases, it might be advantageous to go ahead and file your taxes at the regular time. If you're expecting a refund, you should probably go ahead and do that right away. If you're, think you might have trouble paying, you could, you can postpone that and defer that. As of today, the local property taxes have not been pushed back. That's still ongoing, that discussion. So, currently, the, for the second half of property taxes will be due May 31st. There's a potential that that get pushed off for non-escrowed taxes until later, but we don't have definitive word on that yet. There's also, let's see, a great deal of information here. Again, if you'd like to volunteer, you can email us at That, we can put you on a master list and, and match your skills and resources with those in need. So, again, we appreciate anybody who can help out their neighbors at this time.
Peter, can I give a report on Human Services?
Sure, and then Jeff, if you want to say something after that, we'll go to you. Go ahead, Kathy.
So, I've already mentioned that the senior center of Human Services is doing weekly wellness calls. They're distributing prepared meals and grocery shopping and picking up needed prescriptions. Another critical component of their services is that they're making referrals to the Springs, East Hampton, and Montauk food pantries, social workers at the East Hampton High School, Meals on Wheels, and they're coordinating with East Hampton Housing Authority, Windmill 1 and 2, St. Michael's, East End Cares, and other entities. Liliana Rodriguez, the town's bilingual case manager, has been invaluable conduit, providing information and assistance in both English and Spanish. And I've personally been in contact with school superintendents, the East Hampton Clericus, Most Holy Trinity Outreach, the Food Pantries, Eleanor Whitmore, Ola Meals on Wheels, Family Service League, and Phoenix House. I, I'd like to mention that the East Hampton School District is operating an emergency meal distribution regardless of what school district you belong to. As part of their emergency closing plan, the district is distributing breakfast and lunch to anyone eighteen years of age or younger at East Hampton High School Monday through Friday using a grab-and-go process. The cars enter the bus loop from Long Lane and proceed to the front of the administration entrance where there's a curbside distribution station. And you don't need to leave your car, they will come to you. This is taking place in the mornings. If your last name begins with A through M, you arrive between nine and 10:00 AM. And N and Z arrive between 10:00 and 11:00 to cut down on the wait times. For those without transportation, volunteers are available to deliver these meals. And this can be coordinated through the town's Human Services Department at 631-329-6939. Last Friday, March 27th, more than 1,000 meals were distributed to feed our children over the weekend. I also want to just touch base. I've gotten some information from the Springs Food Pantry. They've been generous enough to share some figures with me. Yesterday, the Springs Food Pantry served four-hundred-and-forty-nine people. One-third were children. By contrast, the first week of March, they served two-hundred-and-seventy-five people, which is a sixty-three percent increase. Yesterday, they registered seventeen new families, bringing their total registration to sixty-one new families and just in the last three weeks. To put that in perspective, they registered sixty-one new families in all of 2019. They tend to have large families in Springs, with the average family size being five people. I'd like to read an excerpt from an email that I received from the Springs Food Pantry. "In the past, many of our working families did not come every week, and some would just appear sporadically. But we are seeing more of them coming more often, and I suspect many will come weekly as their financial situation worsens. We are ordering about ten percent above what we are seeing the previous week, but it has not been enough. We are now anticipating weekly increases of fifteen percent. We do our ordering based upon the number of people, not the number of families, because many families are so large. We are also trying to put more staples in the bags that will last through the week. For instance, more eggs, more milk, more bread, more fresh fruit, and more vegetables. Thus, we will need to order next week about, for about five-hundred-and-twenty people. Our per bag cost is now costing us more than twenty-seven to thirty dollars, the majority of which is for fresh milk, yogurt and cheese, fresh eggs, fresh fruit, and fresh vegetables. The remaining money is for canned goods, cereal, rice noodles, and lunch items." I've also heard from the East Hampton Food Pantry. In March, they fed close to eighteen-hundred individuals. Thirty percent were children. An email that I received says that our next distribution is Tuesday, April 7th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM at our East Hampton location. "This is a big distribution day normally, as we give our clients a complete meal for the Easter holiday. We give roasting chickens, dairy, eggs, bread, fresh vegetables, and fruit. We also have a bag of staples, which includes rice pasta, tuna fish, cereal, pasta, and pasta sauce. So, any senior who needs delivery of food or any client, new client, should call our office at 631-324-2300." So, last week, Peter and I emphasized the financial realities our local food pantries are facing. Please consider a donation if you have the means. Donations can be made through each of the food pantry's websites. Please also consider making a contribution to the Eleanor Whitmore Early Childhood Center, as they serve a critical need in our community as well. I've been in touch with family, with Carol Lee, Carol McGee from Family Service League, and wanted everyone to know that they are back. They are, even though that their brick-and-mortar clinic is closed, Family Service League is still here. All of their therapists are seeing their clients on a secure telehealth Zoom platform, which includes their doctors as well. Sean Willis from Phoenix House outpatient facility has also wanted us to know that they are still open and providing essential services to the community. So, given these extreme levels of stress, anxiety, fear, and loss, it is reassuring to know that Family Service League and Phoenix House continue to serve our residents. And if you'll indulge me for a second, I'd just like to share, when I think of a hero, someone with superpowers usually comes to mind. Sometime, these heroes, Donna Kate, possess superhuman strength and are extremely agile. But at this moment in time, our definition of a hero has changed. All of the folks I refer to in my report who are working tirelessly and selfishly behind the scenes are heroes. The folks at Human Services who are making calls, preparing meals, and delivering them to our seniors are heroes. The staff at the East Hampton High School feeding our children so no child goes hungry are heroes. The volunteers at the food pantries providing nutritious food to those who are food insecure are heroes. The teachers and teaching assistants who have had to adapt their practices so our children can continue to learn and have some normalcy are heroes. The custodians and sanitation workers keeping our workplaces and our public spaces clean and sanitized are heroes. The police officers, marine patrol officers, volunteer firefighters and EMTs who are a phone call away are heroes. The grocery store workers who are ensuring that stores stay open so everyone has access to fresh food and essentials are heroes. And the nurses, doctors, and healthcare professionals who are putting their own lives at risk, treating our sick are heroes. In the midst of terrible events, heroes emerge. We see you, we thank you, and may God bless you."
Thank you for that, Kathy.
Well said, Kathy.
Thank you so much. I just want to, you know, thank you for that and all you've been doing to work with Human Services. This is really, you know, going to be such a critical part of how we recover, working together, and we are blessed to have so many wonderful people in this town who are willing to step up and help out when times get hard. That really is the greatest gift of living in a small community like this. So, to all of you who are helping, God bless you. Thank you for that, and everybody can be a hero. So, if you can figure out what you have to give, everybody has something to offer, this is the time, now and into the immediate future. Jeff, did you want to make a comment or two?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something a little bit more personal, perhaps. I was, I took about twenty minutes the other night to sit out at Northwest Harbor. I know a place that you know, Peter, and it was just me and the sun going down and no television and no phone. It was kind of a relief. And I realized oddly that I felt extremely happy despite the hazards and all the unknowns that we're facing. And I, I think it's, I think the, it felt a little odd to feel happy, but I think the reason was that I realized that there is no other place in the world that I would rather be, especially in a crisis, than in our small town of East Hampton. Impossible as it is to envision this situation when I was first elected and felt so honored, it feels like even a greater honor to be on this town board, working with, with you guys to try to help and fix, and fix things. And it reminds me of the real importance of the town board, our local little government, you know, five-person board, everybody has a voice, everybody has a vote. And we can still communicate, and we still are communicating. We can still argue a little bit, we are, and we still reach consensus and make policy, which is a really important part of, of keeping the town together. And at the same time, it's so important for us to hear from residents because they advise us, they correct us, they inform us, and sometimes they admonish us. There's a little complaining involved as well. And we need, we need all the members of the public to talk to us. They give us information and help us find a way forward. And we also need the, the help of all the volunteers that Kathy was just referring to, the neighborhood activists and, you know, the first responders, all the people that help out in this time of need. And we really, we really do thank them with all our heart for what they do. of need, and we really, we really do thank them with all our heart for what they do, it's so important. And it just reminds me that we have sort of a community of mutual reliance. We, you know, it shows me that this democracy with the town board acting on behalf of all the residents is the finest kind of government we can have for our small town, and it makes us stronger than any crisis. And, you know, we're doing a lot of talking about our needs, you know, we think about the food pantry, the first responders, the fire police, and so many others that we can't even name. But I really want to remind us all and remind myself that our most important need is each other. And that's because in this common threat, threat to all of our humanity, it really demands common action from all of us. I just, I have to say that it's not just, you know, a lofty phrase, you know, and it's not just, you know, fine words. We really need each other, because only by being together, even if we can't touch each other, that's where we find our strength, that's where we find our courage, that's where we find our hope. And these are tough times, and I just wanted to say to everybody that's listening tonight to please stay in touch, please stay safe, and please stay home, and our community's stronger, and we'll make it through.
Thank you for those comments, Jeff, I appreciate them, and echoing those sentiments. At this point, if any other board members would like to say something, otherwise, we'll move on to our agenda.
Sure, so we should start with Resolution twenty twenty four zero eight. It's a secret determination for various bonds that include construction improvements to existing facilities, acquisition of police communications equipment, acquisition of heavy-duty vehicles and equipment, road reconstruction, sidewalk improvements, drainage improvements, reconstruction of the Marine Museum Phase One, replacement of pilings, record digitization, parking improvements at Town Hall, CDCH building improvements, acquisition of equipment for East Hampton Garage and Refuge Special District, construction of improvements for Camp Hero Sewers Special District, Montauk Skate Park improvements, dock improvements, and these capital projects are classified as a Type II action under CECL, and as such, no further environmental review of the proposed projects are required.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We need to do a roll call, Carol, on every resolution, or no?
Just the bonds.
Just the bonds. You sure, Carol?
Resolution twenty-
Go ahead, Carol.
I can hear your votes, we'll do them on the bonds.
Okay, thank you for that.
If somebody's next, just make sure you make it clear.
Okay, appreciate that, this is uncharted territory. Go ahead, Kathy.
Twenty twenty four zero nine is a bond authorization for a hundred thousand dollars additional funds for records management. This is a continuation of the digitization project that the town started in twenty fourteen, and it brings the total to two million four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I'm sorry, the total would be two million five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, and the PPU, the period of probable usefulness is five years.
Have a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye. Passed and carried.
Resolution twenty twenty four ten is a bond for an additional five hundred thousand dollars for construction improvements at the CDCH building. This would bring the total bonding to eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, and the period of probable usefulness is ten years.
Second.
All in favor? Well, let's do the roll call.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried.
Twenty twenty four eleven is a bond resolution for eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The bond resolution, excuse me, is for various town facilities, estimated at eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, that's the authorization for.
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a roll call, please, Carol.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried.
Resolution twenty twenty four twelve is a bond authorization for five hundred thousand dollars for the reconstruction of the Marine Museum, Phase One.
Second.
Roll call, please, Carol.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried.
Twenty twenty four thirteen is a notice of a public hearing amending Section two forty dash fifty-eight, Schedule Eight, stop intersections of the East Hampton Town Code for Acaponic Road and Collins Avenue. This was discussed at a town board meeting. We are looking actually schedules for public hearing, but I do want to amend what we have here currently right now. We can make it amended that the public hearing will be on May eleventh at eleven AM.
May, hold on a minute.
It stays May seven.
May seven.
Yeah.
And I apologize, amend it to May seventh at eleven AM would be my motion.
Correct. I second that as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried, and just so the public knows, we're planning on having all of our town board regular meetings and work sessions at eleven o'clock during the day when the bandwidth isn't quite so taken up.
I have Resolution twenty twenty four fourteen is the Avalon Lakefront Resort Notice of a Public Hearing for the CPF Project Plan Edition. Again, I would like to amend this, so the public hearing will be on May seventh at eleven AM. This is for Suffolk County Tax Map three hundred dash twenty-seven dash four dash twenty-nine. The location is one thirty-six Second House Road in Montauk. Again, it'll be on eleven AM of May seventh. The public can also watch, this will be for all the public hearings right now, the public can watch on Channel twenty-two. They can also call into the live feed of the time of hearing at nine seven eight nine nine zero five thousand, the access code is five eight nine three three nine. This is pursuant to the executive order of the Governor of the State of New York.
I'll second as amended. Also, that phone number will be up on the screen, so if you can't remember the phone number or write it down in time, it will be up on the screen as we proceed.
And all of the public hearings, the procedure has not yet been finalized by the Committee of Open Governments, and we haven't gotten direct advisement from the state yet, so that is subject to change in terms of the requirements for holding, conducting a legal public hearing. Public meetings are fine, but we're still seeking guidance, and that's true with all the municipalities at this time. So we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Twenty twenty four fifteen is the schedule of a public hearing for the real property acquisition into the Mend twenty twenty M and S Plan. This is for the Avalon Lakefront Resort Incorporated at one thirty-six Second House Road in Montauk. Suffolk County Tax Map is three hundred dash twenty-seven dash four dash twenty-nine. Again, I would like to amend this resolution, so the public hearing be held May seventh at eleven AM.
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not it, passed and carried, not everybody was happy about that.
It's ice cream time.
Okay.
I have Resolution twenty twenty four sixteen is to appoint part-time employees in the Recreation Department. This will be for hourly rates for Cheryl Carter, Recreation Specialist, at twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents, and Dorothy Mosley, Recreation Aid, at fourteen dollars, effective April nineteenth, twenty twenty.
I think it's actually twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
I apologize, twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
I have twenty twenty four seventeen is the payout upon retirement for Veronica Daniels. She's custodial worker one, retired, her full-time employment effective March fourteenth, twenty twenty. She has secured vacation time of one thousand forty-one dollars and eighty cents, sick time is three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, compensated statutory time, sorry, seventeen dollars and nine cents, prorated longevity of four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, for a gross total of one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
I have twenty twenty four eighteen is a septic bid EH twenty zero zero four for the Amigante Municipal Field Construction to South Fork Asphalt. They were the lowest bid received. This bid was reviewed by Jeanne Carosa, Town Senior Purchasing Agent, and the Town Consultant Engineers L.K. McLean Associates, that recommended the award to South Fork Asphalt in the amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
I have Resolution twenty twenty four nineteen is to set the bid for EH twenty zero one zero, the Amigante Conference Station Septic Upgrade to Keith Grimes Incorporated. The bid was, bids were submitted and reviewed by Jeanne Carosa, and also the Town Consulting Engineer L.K. McLean, and Keith Grimes, accepting the bid of sixty-two thousand four hundred, sorry, sixty-two thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution twenty twenty four twenty is a public hearing in the matter of the increase and improvement of facilities of the Camp Hero Sewer District in the town of East Hampton, and the public hearing would be held on May the seventh at eleven AM, amended.
Second.
Second as amended.
As amended, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Twenty twenty four twenty-one is a list appointment from Provisional Environmental Aid, is for Alenny Nicolopoulos, and is hereby appointed permanently to the full-time position of Environmental Aid with the Planning Department, with no change in her hourly rate, schedule, or budget, effective retroactively to March thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried, congratulations, Lenny.
Resolution four twenty-two is to amend Resolution twenty twenty three oh eight, list appointment from Provisional Office Assistant for Paula Guanga, and Paula Guanga be and is hereby permanently appointed to the full-time position of Office Assistant, Spanish-speaking, with the town clerk, with no change in salary, budget, account, or schedule, effective retroactively to February thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried, congratulations, Paula.
Resolution twenty twenty four twenty-three is to accept a proposal, RFP number EH twenty twenty dash one oh two, is for Household Hazardous Waste Collection Days, known as Stop Days, and this is awarded to Radiac Environmental Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution twenty twenty four twenty-four is a promotion to Senior Environmental Analyst for Melissa Winslow, congratulations, Melissa. She was, we took an examination, was reachable on the list, having the qualifications, and has been promoted at an hourly rate of thirty-three dollars and thirty cents, and annually sixty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a forty-hour week, effective retroactive March eleventh, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried, congratulations, Melissa.
Resolution twenty twenty four twenty-five is a payout on retirement for Betsy Martin. Congratulations on reaching retirement, she has been the Justice Court Director, and the resolution authorizes payment of accumulated vacation time of about eighty-six, eight thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars, sick time, thirty-one thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars, and prorated longevity of six hundred and sixty-six dollars for a gross total of forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to Betsy Martin as her final pay. Again, congratulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Betsy, we hope you enjoy your retirement, and thank you for your long service to the town.
Resolution twenty twenty four twenty-six is to authorize a payment of a past due optimum bill in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four dollars from relating to the airport.
It's two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Yes.
Sorry.
Pretty soon that adds up.
That's right, a nickel here, a nickel there, pretty soon you're throwing them out, some real money.
We had a second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution twenty twenty four twenty-seven is a, I'm going to offer it in an amended form, it's to retain Cooley LLP, and I want to just give a little of the language that the town expresses its public policy and responsibility to protect residents from the adverse effect of airport noise, and that we had previously adopted local laws restricting the use of the airport in an attempt to control airport noise, which were enjoined by the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, and that the local government expresses it's the fact that it is right for the community, and which should have its ability to make local decisions to protect the welfare of its residents, and it's critical that the town retain Airport Council to help it control airport noise, exhaust all options to protect residents from excessive noise, and to control the noise, working with the Federal Aviation Association and under the Airport Noise and Capacity Act of nineteen ninety, if that is applicable, and the attorneys that we are employing are working at Cooley LLP, and we are retaining them with a retainer not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars with further expenditures to be authorized by the town board.
Can I just say, the first resolve should say twenty twenty instead of twenty nineteen?
Yes.
So second as amended.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Resolution twenty twenty four twenty-eight is a bond for one million three hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred dollars for various projects, and these projects range from the replacement of upgrades of cameras, workstations, office equipment, license plate reader, various patrol cars, vehicles, stair treads, it's a pretty broad and extensive list.
I'll second, I will say that all of these were discussed at town work sessions with Len Bernard as part of our capital budget, so this is the culmination of that process, is doing all, because you're going to have a lot of bonds coming up here.
Yes, exactly, and these are the result of our three-year capital planning, and so this is the in-year twenty twenty. So can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried. Resolution four twenty-nine is a bond for one hundred thousand dollars, parking lot improvement at Town Hall.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried. Resolution four thirty is a bond for ninety-five thousand dollars for sidewalk improvements.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried. Resolution four thirty-one is a bond for fifty thousand dollars for communications equipment for the Police Department.
Second.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried. Four thirty-two is a bond for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for construction improvements at the Police Headquarters.
Second.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby.
Aye.
Councilman Bragman.
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Aye, passed and carried. Four thirty-three is notice of public hearing, or calling for the public hearing in the matter of increase improvement of facilities at EH Garbage and Refuge District in the town of East Hampton, County of Suffolk, New York pursuant to Section two oh two B of the town law, and that meeting is, that hearing is- And that meeting is, the hearing is to be held on May seventh at eleven AM.
Second, as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Resolution four thirty-four is a list appointment to Associate Administrator for Nicole Focido. And Nicole is appointed uh, full-time position Associate Administrator in East Hampton Town Police Department hourly rate of thirty-four dollars, an annual salary of seventy-one thousand one hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for a forty-hour work week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Four thirty-five is a budget modification, Montauk Sand Replenishment. And this is where as the town decided uh, that we needed to replenish the sand on the downtown Montauk Beach based on engineering study and whereas the town and county share the cost of the replacement, therefore be it resolved to add fifty thousand dollars to Montauk Sand Replenishment, add twenty-five thousand to appropriation of surplus and add twenty-five thousand dollars to service to other governments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Four thirty-six is a budget modification for emergency preparedness. And that is moving twenty-five thousand dollars from contingency to subcontractors, emergency civil defense.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Four thirty-seven is to pay previous year's invoice for AT&amp;T Mobility LLC. And that is to authorize the payment of an invoice uh, from November uh, twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen in the amount of seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I ask that to be adopted as amended because I don't think it's mobility anymore? I got a call after this was all done for me to change. It's AT&amp;T something else right now.
Okay, amended to say AT&amp;T something else right now.
Okay, I trust you.
Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed, carried. Four thirty-eight is to authorize payment of Sir Tillman Baylen Adler Hyman for twenty nineteen invoices uh, through Town Attorney's Office and that is in the amount of fifty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
We're getting a little background music. Unfortunately, sounds almost like the town's old music. Really needs to be updated.
Playing us off screen.
Uh, Jason, if you can hear us, maybe you could cut the music for now. Fourth, fourth, four thirty-nine is to engage outside counsel in the matter of Orsted Everseor South Fork Wind Farm Application twenty twenty. And this is for, um, let's see, exact. Uh, this is for Jeffrey Genzer, Law Firm Duncan, uh, Weinberg, Genzer and Pembroke. And that is uh, at the various rates listed
Second.
For the year twenty twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Four forty is to accept proposal for Wesley Comfort Station Septic Upgrade Design. And that would be uh, for L K McLean Associates in a cost not to exceed ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Four four one is to accept bid EH twenty zero zero nine, Montauk Sand Replenishment twenty twenty. That, Patrick Bistrion Junior Incorporated. And that is to be in a total amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, twenty-nine ninety per cubic yard. And uh,
Second.
Works to be done in accordance with the bid specification, bid submission of the contractor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried. Four four two is to extend contract EH eighteen zero one five. That's the annual contract for the supply and delivery of Hino Truck Parts Gabrielli Truck Sales LTD. And that is to extend uh, the period of one year effective May first, twenty twenty through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Are there any additional resolutions to bring forward at this time? Yes, I guess not. I just wanna uh, wish everyone who's watching a very safe uh, and uneventful future for the time being. Uh, we hope that you uh, take this time to reflect on uh, friends and loved ones and to think about others in your community and how you can help. As uh, Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez read off a list of those who we now consider heroes. Uh, you know, we consider all of you heroes just by following the very sound advice that we're getting uh, as well as helping in any way you can to pull us through this very, very difficult time. So again, uh, best wishes to all of you. Stay well. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session?
This is to discuss litigation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Be well everyone, we'll wait a moment.